The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting tonight. We can please start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which contains one nation, indivisible, with every just as law.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Dela Christensen.
Here.
Councilor Giannoni.
Here.
Here, Fazinski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Pagliaro.
Here.
Councilor Pianessa.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
He's sitting in Denver Airport right now.
Oh, nice. Maybe he could phone in.
So, he's not gonna make it. Okay? Thanks, Joey.
It's the Jetson tube to get here.
Yeah. All right. Well, okay, so. We have a roll call. We're all set. I, um, before our audience of citizens, I just wanted to... I hope everybody's here, probably not on that topic, but I just wanted to make one comment to set the record straight. I heard, um, an elected representative this week talk about Berlin, from Berlin, representing Berlin, and he talked about the Berlin Police Department and, I guess, how we should have regionalized the dispatch center. Well, as a cost-saving measure, I guess, is what he was trying to say. I'm not really sure, but just to make the record clear, when we had to refurbish and replace the dispatch center, which is really just the council, we really had to replace the whole radio system, which was thirty years old Motorola, had no parts for it anymore, so the radio system had to be completely redone, or we couldn't communicate to our officers or anybody else. So, we couldn't... You can't regionalize a broken radio system. We couldn't join the dispatch center in New Britain with a broken radio in Berlin, so that was a misspe... misspoken, and, you know, I don't, I don't think that information... I wish that our elected officials would get the facts before they put things out to the public. It's not something that we could've done, and furthermore, even if we did try and regionalize, um, there was no other radio system to use. I think now, right, with the state police, there is a, an option to maybe hook up with their system.
I believe so.
Yeah, going forward, but we're going back two or three years, and again, it was, it was so broken that, much like our fire radios, which we need to vote on tonight, we can't even communicate with the, you know, fire department sometimes, that's how bad that is, so hence, we need to fix that, too. So, that's not a really regionalization question, that's a question of public safety and, you know, the decision with a broken radio that couldn't communicate to our officers when they're out on the street has to be done immediately, so it had nothing to do with, you know, joining with New Britain or not. In fact, we brought that up. We could move the dispatch center today, it's a council and the PD, but the radio system had to be fixed no matter what, so just to kind of set the record straight, if anybody heard that or if anybody is listening. Okay. With that, we'll move on to the, uh, audience of citizens. Um, anybody here from the audience wishes to address the council? Now would be the time. Sir. How are you?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Jeff Pager. Uh, I live at, uh, one fifty-three Dale Drive.
How you doing?
I'm the chief of Kensington Fire, and I will speak very briefly to make an impassioned plea for the bonding for the fire department radios. Um, we can talk about the safety issues, we can talk about the twenty-year-old system, much like you've discussed, PD radios were, were very old. Um, you know, at this point, we've had failures in the system, we've replaced a few small, very small components to try to kind of limp it along, um, but it has come down to, to the fact that it, it really is a safety, you know, concern for us. From my perspective, from Chief Simons, from some of the folks from the fire department who are on that committee, um, we have done quite a bit of due diligence, I think, to look at three different vendors, to not just say, "We're just gonna go with kind of who has been doing the radios in the past." We're, we're maybe looking at some other options, some, some potential savings and costs. Um, I don't think the one point, you know, I think it's one point four, we're not gonna, we're not gonna spend one point four, obviously, but I mean, there's some contingency and things like that, but, um, we're really looking at, you know, all of the moving parts and really trying to make this something that will live for another, you know, ten to fifteen years, twenty years at, at the most, but something that's going to be, um, workable for us and have the ability to talk to others, and there's a lot of moving parts there. So, um, I just wanted to offer my support for that and hope that we can have that support. Thank you.
Understandable. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Appreciate that. Uh, anyo... Anyone else from the public? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close the audience of citizens, and we can move on to our consent agenda. We have... What do we have? We have, we have, what, four items, I guess? We have, uh, reviewed the consent agenda. Do we have any questions on it? Anybody from the council? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and take a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda before us tonight.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Some moved? Okay, thank you. So, we'll go to new business.
New business, the first thing out of new business is, uh, a discussion for the VNA. Mayor, you asked me to have this on the agenda?
Yes, thank you. So, the VNA, Wendy and Jen are here, appreciate you guys being here. Um, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about the VNA, and we're working on the VNA. Obviously, it's a big line item in our budget, and we've had some discussions with the, um, Board of Finance has been discussing it as well, um, and we were working to fix it. You know, we know we have to increase the census in it, and we're certainly working on that, but that's something that we really just started to look at, uh, really with the hiring of Wendy and Jen, and, um, you know, I was disturbed at the Board of Finance meeting last week over the treatment, quite frankly, of our director Wendy and Jen, um, where, you know, we have the chairman of the Board of Finance is talking about asking professionals what to do, and we have professionals, that's who we hired to, to work on the VNA and move it forward. So, um, I'm not sure, and we didn't know who... He supposedly spoke to some professionals, we don't know who they are, we have no report from anybody, so I'm not sure what that was supposed to mean, but I, I don't like the fact that, um, elected officials attack our professional town staff. I mean, they're here for a reason, you know, and they're here to help us and help our town, and that's why we have Wendy and Jen to, Jen to, to work through our issues with the VNA, and we're gonna do the best we can to, uh, to fix the funding and, and, you know, add to the census, and we have actually Councilor Pagliaro, too, who spent, I don't know, twenty years in the VNA system, I guess, and more, in healthcare, so she's also working...
Thirty-six.
How many?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, or better, even better. Okay, thirty-six. So, we have, uh, you know, spent, uh, we have people that are working on this, so, um, I just wanted to bring that out, I wanted to thank you ladies for, um, being there last week, and, and, uh, really apologize, I know it wasn't from us, from the council, we're behind you, we're trying to make this work, you know, we know if it... We've given it some time, we, we put like a year or two on it to see if we can make it better and, uh, make it, uh, more self-funding, that we don't have to, you know, put additional tax dollars into it, but we need to give it some time to fix it. And again, recognizing that the VNA is in the charter, uh, it's something, it's in our town charter, our town constitution, basically, and, um, you know, uh, members of the Board of Finance talked about defunding it, which you can't do, there's state regulations involved, there's federal regulations involved, so, um, I think they understood, you know, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Attorney De Nofrio was there and explained that to them, too, and no, nobody likes it, you know, nobody likes that it's costing us some money now, we understand that, but we are, we have a plan, we explained the plan to the Board of Finance, I think they understood it, but again, you know, we'll see what they do with it, but we need to, to sustain it right now, and we're trying to improve it and fix it, and I, I'm hopeful we can do that, and I think the entire council, uh, has already agreed in other meetings to, to move forward with that and, and see what we can do. So, anyway, I just wanted to thank you for your work on this, I know you're, um, been working hard on it, and, uh, you know, we're supporting you, and we, we know you are, are professionals that help us get through these problems, so, anyway, that's why I had you here, and I thought it was worth saying, so, thank, thank you ladies for being here tonight. All right, thank you. Anything else about the VNA?
I'm good.
So, I, I...
Yes, yes.
Um, I also would like to send my thanks to you both, because I know that when you came in, you really did a lot of work, hard work, to be sure that all our, um, COPs and the requirements were met, and that you filled a lot of the gaps, and if you hadn't and we had been audited, it would've cost us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, so I really do commend you. Um, the one thing that I will say is, in terms of the census, I truly hope that by the start of our new fiscal year, we're at eighty, and we go up from there every single month without dips, and that's what I'm really hoping to see happen, because if you do that, maybe we can turn it around so that it self-sustains versus using taxpayer dollars, so that's, that would be my goal, and I hope that you realize that goal. You're welcome.
Anything else? We good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you again, and, uh, we, uh, we know we'll work hard to try and, uh, make the VNA better, so thanks a lot. Okay, item two.
Agenda number two is for, is for the council to adopt an ordinance for appropriating one point four point, one point four-four million dollars for the fire radio system.
Nice. Okay. So, we've had our, uh, we've had our public hearing, we've certainly, uh, discussed, um, the fire radio system, and it's, uh, being inadequate, not even working, I guess, as Mr. Simons and, uh, Kensington Chief pointed out, Mr. Pager, we, uh, we understand that's a bad thing to have in our town, we don't, we can't, we can't accept that, uh, it's a matter of safety, it's a matter of the safety of our fire departments, a matter of the safety of our citizens, so, um, you know, we've, we've had much discussion and we, I think we know what we need to do, so if we have any other, any other questions on the fire radio system and the, and the bonding ordinance? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and, uh, read our, uh, motion.
Okay. Move to adopt an ordinance appropriating one million four hundred and forty thousand dollars for fire radio improvements in two thousand nineteen, and authorizing the issue of, issue of one million four hundred and forty thousand dollars, bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purposes.
Thank you. Is there second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any, uh, further discussion or comments?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
This has to go to, um, to, uh, referendum approval or no?
No. No. It's under, under five million.
It's under five?
Yes.
Under five.
Thank God it's under five million, right? It's not over five million, is it? No, no. Uh, yeah, no, it's under, so we should be, we should be good with this, and, um, you know, I, I mean, I gu... Listen, we have a very, very tough budget year we're facing, you know, there's, it's very, very difficult, we're just in a bad spot, uh, with a lot of things that have converged at this time in history with our budget, and it is what it is, but, you know, obviously there's some things we can't compromise on, and that's public safety, certainly communication between our, uh, public safety officials, uh, you know, our firemen, our police EMS, um, we have no choice, you know, the government's here for a reason, to serve the people in Berlin, and, uh, you know, there's things that they expect for their tax dollars, we all expect for our tax dollars, and fire and police protection are one of them, and obviously, we need to give our fire department the tools to, to, to do what they need to do, and this is probably one of the most important tools, is the radio system with communication, so, uh, you know, that's why we're here. Nobody wants to have to bond more money, we've got a lot of money bonded out there over the years, and we're trying to cut down on it, but, you know, this one particular issue is something we can't, um, we can't compromise on, so, anyway. Hearing no?
Can I just...
Yes, yes.
Councilor Giannoni, that, in my, the summary, I think that's what he's talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I read it further.
I'm sorry.
It says four or three percent of electors.
Yeah, so it, it could go by petition, but it's unlikely.
Okay.
I think that's what you...
Okay, it could always go by petition.
Yes.
Correct, that's right, yes. That is true.
All right, I just wanted to, I, I knew where you were going with it, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, he saw my wheel spinning.
Uh, well, if they wanna bring a petition out, I guess, maybe that's the house we, you know, if they're headed to their house and they can't communicate, that might not work out, so, but, um, I think everybody understands what we need to do, and it's things, things we need to, we need to fix, so, anyway, any other comments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Some moved? Okay, thank you, everyone. You guys, thank, thank you for all the information, help us ma... made our decision. Easy. Thanks.
Agenda number three is a presentation for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, Mattabasset Sewer District Budget. Art Simone is here, I think you know Art, he's here to give a presentation.
Sure do.
Uh, good evening.
How are you, everyone?
How we doing? Great, and, uh, with me is John Dunham, our board chairman from Berlin.
Sir, hi, Jim.
So, uh, he's in attendance with us tonight, and, uh, this is something we've been doing, doing every year, I think this is the third year we're doing this, and we'd like to present the Mattabasset Budget, um, so we have an idea of what some of the drivers are this year, where we're looking at for the future, more importantly, so, um, so this year, we had, uh, our two biggest drivers in our budget were electricity and our capital this year, even though we just went through a, about one hundred and ten million dollar upgrade, there's still other capital projects that we have to do, um, the plan is valued about a hundred and thirty million dollars, so, um, we're actually improving our, our Ross Switch pumps, uh, we're doing some improvements on our final clarifiers and other areas as well, so those two big items are really the, the largest driver of our budget increases. Um, in your package, there's a, kind of a summary sheet that kind of helps explain, um, what some of those, uh, highlight budget items on there, looks like this, with my initials at the top, um, if I could, I'll just go through those briefly. Um, so this year is about a three point eight percent increase, a little more, little bit more than we were planning to, but, um, going forward in the future, Middletown is set to join the district fully with their, um, treatment plant closing and the pump station coming online, so that'll help, um, distribute assessments further to, uh, Middletown and less towards New Britain, Berlin, and Cromwell, so you'll probably see some adjustments...
Nice, we like that, yeah, we like that.
Let's say, you probably see some reductions in your, in your assessments, um, in the future, so that's good news. Um, five-year average flows is how we determine our flows, this year was a very wet year, uh, wet year in two thousand, um, eighteen, so, but you don't really see the impact of that, because we spread it out over five years and take the average, um, but really the last two years have been relatively wet, so we've seen a little bit more flow that way. Um, this year, uh, Berlin, um, credit was, uh, beneficial with the Middletown addition of a credit of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, so every year, we apply this thirteen million dollar buy-in fee proportionally to New Britain, Berlin, and Cromwell, and it's reducing each year until it, uh, runs out in, in two thousand, I think it's thirty, so, um, so this year was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, which obviously helps, uh, Berlin's assessment, and, um, the other thing to make note of here is that we're using less, um, uh, we increased use of reserve funds, but we have less revenue coming in from Middletown, because they're gonna be pulling, uh, joining the district, we won't be getting, uh, sludge revenue from them. They used to bring us their sludge by trucks, and we invoice them every month, obviously, once they connect to the district fully, their flows will be coming to us through their, uh, sewer pipes, so, so we have to budget for that, uh, for next year to reflect that they'll be connected to us, but, uh, not yet, you know, not actually, uh, getting assessed for their sludge revenues. And then, um, this is a good point to mention here, Berlin is paying ninety point three percent of debt service, even though the reserve capacity is fourteen percent, so that's a good thing, you're paying less than, your reserve capacity is basically how much flow you have reserved in the district for, uh, for maximum capacity, and with the wet weather, with, it's typically that we may see higher flows than that, we've, uh, I know you guys are working on some I and I, too, as well, which, uh, which will help in the future, but, uh, because of those credits from, um, Middletown buying, that's why you're paying less than that fourteen percent. And I mentioned New Britain, too, they're paying about twenty-one percent of debt services as part of their assessments, even though, um, they're about forty-one percent of our flows, and, uh, Middletown's flows are estimated to start in late summer, so probably by fall time of this year, we'll see them hopefully fully connected, so in the following year's budget, in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, you'll see those, uh, adjustments and assessments start taking an impact. Um, and the next page just shows some of the highlights of the budget, um, if you exclude electricity and capital, the budget's only about a one point six percent increase, so again, those two items account for about three hundred and fifty thousand of the five hundred thousand dollar increase in our budget, so, um, and part of the reason electricity went up is we're doing similar to Berlin, uh, energy performance contract, um, so we have to budget an increase in electricity to help pay for that, uh, for that project, we're doing LED lighting and, um, rooftop units and air handling units to help save some electricity in the future, so, um, so that'll, that'll help out in the long run. And, um, the other thing, too, is that, uh, what we're working with some of the haulers are bringing our sludge, too, so we're trying to keep our sludge revenues up as high as we can, um, to help offset, um, the budgets, that seems to be going pretty well, um, and then once Middletown joins in, we'll probably have a little bit more capacity, too, as well, to treat, um, some outside sludges, so, um, so those are the main, uh, kind of driving points, um, if you wanna look at Berlin's assessments, it's on a page that looks like this, I think it's called page one of two, um, this was sent to the Water Control Commission already, um, so, again, it's, um, you know, the biggest driver is the capital, and obviously, the debt service is a big portion, but debt services reduces each year, this year, we're paying about five point three million, I recall, in debt service for the Clean Water Fund loan, so that drops down about a hundred to, a hundred and fifty thousand every year until that's paid off in two thousand thirty-four, so I did share with the finance director, too, for your bonding, um, evaluations, um, debt service, um, what Berlin's liability is going forward, too, 'cause I know that he asked about that, and we do that every year. So, um, kinda short and hopefully sweet here, I, I know, uh, I'm not too happy with the three point eight percent, but it is somewhat justified this year, uh, we have some pretty big capital items that we just have to do, um, and again, you'll probably see an adjustment next year that'll, I think you'd be much happier with, and, uh, could maybe a good chance to build some of your reserves, too, if you have to, and the Water Control Commission, I know you're doing some I and I work, and, uh, as my council item here, as I help prepare, um, I encourage you to keep doing that, too, 'cause you, you've seen the benefits, I think, already, uh, I mentioned that in the council item, that your, your five-year flows have dropped from eighteen point eight percent of all the district flows to seventeen point six, although it doesn't sound like a big number, it, it does factor in quite a bit to your operating, uh, part of the budget, so, um, so, you know, and, and all the districts, all the communities that belong to us are doing some I and I work, um, Cromwell doesn't have to do really much, but Berlin, New Britain, and Middletown as well, so, as every, as everybody starts reducing their I and I, that'll help, uh, with some of our peak flows as well, uh, reducing those down in the future. All right.
Right.
That's all I had.
Appreciate the report, you know, we, obviously, in the last couple of years, we hear from our residents about, you know, obviously, costs are going up, so it's, it's good that we, you know, get the information out there.
If I could add, I mean, if they could read the news, oh, the costs.
Actually, gotta, come on, yeah, yeah, come on up, John, what the heck? Come on. Come on, John, it's okay, yeah.
Your face on camera.
Yeah.
You even have yours, too.
On camera.
John Dunham, one sixty-five Oak Ridge Drive. Uh, I just want to say, you know, the three point six percent increase, although, you know, certainly more than anybody wants to hear, you know, our partners over at MDC have had significant increases over the last few years with the, uh, program that they've been undertaking, so we undertook a very large program and have been able to keep our costs to, you know, single-digit increases, you know, below five percent every year. MDC, I know, is, and not just to bash them, but, you know, they've have other challenges, uh, but they're ten and twenty percent increases year over year sometimes, so I think we've done a pretty good job over there, um, and, uh, we do, we are cognizant of the costs.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think, as long as we get the right information out there, people understand, you know, they've, obviously, we have to, something we always have to upgrade and work on, and you, you're upgrading...
Regulations get more stringent and more stringent, and that's, there's a cost to that, so...
That's right.
That's how that goes.
And keep in mind, too, last year, I think we had less than a one percent increase for Berlin, so, you know, two years together, you're probably averaging about one and a half to two percent, so, um, so pretty good over a two-year period.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Okay. Agenda number four, uh, is a request to waive the town's purchasing requirements, um, for some Ford OEM parts. Uh, Jim Simon is here to explain the request, I think we did this last year also, so, Jim?
So, at the beginning of the year, we put forth to you people to approve, and you did approve, a list of vendors in which we have bought, purchased auto parts from and services. Within there, there was two Ford dealerships that we split up the amount of monies between. Um, one of those Ford dealerships is not performing, so we've been forced to go to the other Ford dealership, and in doing so, we have lit, met the, the twenty-five thousand dollars that we set, and it's only half a year's over, so we need to increase that, we're asking to increase that by another ten thousand dollars.
Okay, I, I, so...
So, so the original, the original...
Yeah.
Um, was twenty-five for each Ford dealer.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
So, as I said, one was, one's not performing adequately enough, so it's forced us to move the other way, and that's the way we're gonna move.
That's too bad, huh?
So, you, you're not really increasing the amount of money, you're just moving it from one vendor to another?
Correct.
Hmm, okay. Gotta do, that's what we gotta do. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Simons? Take a motion?
I move to waive the town's purchasing requirements and purchase Ford OEM parts from Monaco and Sons Motor Sales of Glastonbury, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Some moved?
Agenda number five is a request to lock in to a diesel contract for the upcoming year, um, we normally, we, we, uh, participate in the, the CROG bid for the diesel fuel, uh, they go out and they, they, they send out a RFP every year, and we normally tack onto it, uh, Jim Simon's here to explain our strategy.
So, again, going with lowest vendor, um, but I don't feel that it's time to lock in the price of fuel, and here's my thoughts, the, right now, we're in the middle of winter, or just coming out of winter, so the price of fuel oils and the price of diesels are high. Our current contract runs through July first, or until we use up the amount that's still on the contract, so we have a little time to play with it. If we watch the markets that are out there, the markets are still trending up, they should be la... leveling off and then begin to decrease, especially in diesel fuel for the summer, in which the gasoline prices will go up. There's certain times that you purchase each commodity, so the commodity purchasing for diesel in the, uh, early summer, June, May, June, somewhere around there, the prices will be, or should be, better, um, so if, what we're doing here is we're identifying that we're going to award the contract to East River Energy, starting July first, who has the current contract, and we're going to monitor the commodity markets until we feel that the price is at the best price that we can obtain, and at that point, we'll buy the thirty-seven thousand gallons of diesel in futures.
Okay.
Okay.
I get it. Yeah, good. Take a motion?
Okay. Move toward the contract for the purchase of three, thirty-seven thousand five hundred gallons of diesel for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year to the low bidder, East River Energy.
Second.
Thank you. Any, uh, further questions, comments, hearing none, all's in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
Agenda Item Number Six, um, is a request to approve a LoSiP grant, um, application. We are looking to put a new roof on the, uh, fleet department, the garage. Uh, currently, when it rains, it rains inside the building also.
Nice.
On the equipment, on the workers, we were there. Uh, this was part of the capital plan, where we would like to pull it out of the capital plan if we can get the funding. LoSiP, our LoSiP money this year, um, would is for a hundred forty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, the estimated price of the project's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So, we feel that we have the- the proper funding. Uh, Doug Solik is here to go over the- what the actions that are needed, there are three steps that we need to take in order for us to go forward with the application.
Hi, Doug. How you doing?
How are you? As Jack said, um, this, we're fortunate enough to receive some LoSiP funding this year, and we felt that this would be a great project to take off the capital list that's been out there for a little while, and we've been doing several repairs and patches and-
Yeah.
Getting through, but as the building keeps getting improved and the vehicles improve that are, and they're getting worked on, um, we felt this project should be a high priority to get taken care of.
Good. Well, we always appreciate when we can take something off the capital list. Um, so, that's always great if we can get some other funding for it. Uh, it's been that way for a while, I understand, right? The, uh, roof on the garage, yeah. A long while? How long? Just so we, long enough, okay, well, that's good enough. So, all right, so, yeah, I mean, uh, makes sense to me, any questions for, questions? All right, so we'll, guess we got a couple of motions here, three motions?
Okay, number one, move to adopt the attached LoSiP resolution.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion, hearing none, all's in favor? Aye. Motion two?
Okay, number two, move to authorize the town manager to apply for a one hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollar LoSiP grant for re-roofing and related work at the fleet garage, and upon receipt of appropriation, appropriate the funds to the LoSiP fleet garage re-roofing project account.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further comments or discussion, hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
And the last one, move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with New Britain Roofing of Newington, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Thank you. Any further, uh, discussion, hearing none, all's in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven is, uh, Chris Edge is here to talk about a, um, to request authorization to approve changes for the- the Town of Berlin tax abatement policy. Chris says, we all know he's the ever-rudder bunny, he's always trying to bring new business into town, and he feels this would be one more tool in his toolbox that he can help bring new business to town.
Thank you very much, Jack. Yes, what you have before you is essentially clarification and some slight modifications. Two years ago, uh, this body had approved the seven-year tax abatement for Forest Machine, uh, which had helped us to get the fifty-five thousand square foot aerospace component manufacturers on Christian Lane. Um, and additionally, recently, we've had other companies that we've been talking to. Since the policy came in in two thousand thirteen, the state language has largely been stripped out. It had said towns such as Berlin can do three years at this rate. Since then, it's been stripped out. Essentially, the only thing it says in the language here is a period not longer than ten years. Pretty much what that means, it's become the Wild, Wild West. Towns can do what they want, when they want, and developers can ask for essentially anything. This has made it, one, challenging, and, two, crazy. Um, and what I'm asking at this point is to take the seven-year tax abatement we gave to Forest Machine, put it in the policy itself, as well as at a second level, which would be five years for a million dollars. Essentially, what it is, is as someone is investing more money, to give them a slightly longer tax abatement. The good news with this is, it's only on what is new to the tax rolls, and it is only on positive development that would come in. The process would not change, it would still go through economic development into this council for final approval. Each one, we would go through and do essentially the analysis of what the tax abatement is versus what the effect could be over twenty years. The other piece we're adding is to officially add in, um, new automotive dealerships. Uh, in the past, it was not in there. We had one dealership which had come in, which is Acura, and I believe there is potentially an opportunity for other to come in or improve. And the other is mixed use. We're currently looking at one, the project by the train station, potentially others, and it really just gives the town the ability to offer it. We don't have to offer it, but because mixed use is not in there, right now, we would not be able to offer it. So, that's really the explanation, and really just taking the language we've already done, some new little pieces, and really gives us a nice little toolbox that's very clear. So, if I talk to someone, or they come to the mayor, or whomever else, we can say, this is what the policy says, this is what we have.
And- and with Forest, that was just the one thing we do, so what, one time, didn't we vote on that one, just a one-time exception?
That was the one, the one time we'd ever done that, yes.
I mean, you know, it's infor- I mean, it's unfortunate we have to do things like this to attract businesses, but that's just the arena we're in, and it's, you know, every town, every state, all over the country does this to attract businesses, I mean, I wish, quite frankly, it would all go away, we might have some more tax dollars for all of us, but it's just not, it's not. It's not the way it is, so, you know, um, having some discussions with some developers recently about it, and they're looking to make some, possibly some big investments in Berlin, and, you know, that's one of the questions they ask us, right? That's always a question, other towns offer it, and, um, we're at a disadvantage if we don't. Unfor- unfortunately, that's the- the game, you know, that's the way it's played, and I don't really like it, but that's, it's all around the country, right? That's how cities and states get Amazon and get other things, they give them all kind of deals, so. That's where we're at, and like I say, we do have some, you know, we've- we've had some great economic development, thanks to Chris here, who's done an outstanding job in our Economic Development Commission, and- and the council, and everyone in town wants to bring business in, obviously grow our tax rolls, uh, to grow our, uh, our taxes, so. And we got some opportunities now, um, you know, a bunch, around the train station, maybe on the Berlin Turnpike, so, you know, we've got some, some people that are very interested in making some big investments in Berlin, so this would just help us with that, and future development. And you're right, just other things we can offer, doesn't mean we have to offer it, but, you know, in the negotiation, it's something we may do.
Well, this- this also is helpful if there happens to be a gap in the project.
Yeah.
If the project cannot be done, the tax abatements may be what helps to bridge the gap. Um, I know banking has become much more challenging with projects, especially different projects. So, it really, again, i- it's an opportunity for the town itself to go out there and say, this is what we're doing, any and all decisions we made by this body.
Yeah.
But I think at least it puts us in a place where we can be competitive with sister communities and throughout the Northeast.
Yeah, we have it on, at least we have it on the books, so if we need it, we can do it, and if we don't, we don't, but, uh,
Absolutely.
That's kind of where we're at, um, what do you- what do you guys think?
I like it, makes a lot of sense, ke- keeps us competitive, and if it brings in even like out-of-state companies, it could bring in employees that may want to reside in town, an increase to the economy. Um, and I- I know you've been really diligent and working hard and- and, uh, doing good work, so if it makes it easier for you to market, I think it makes sense.
Okay. Anything else?
No, just, you know, it's obvious ob- observation that I think that all of us as counselors, that's all we ever hear is, you know, you've got to get more businesses, you've got to bring more businesses, and what are, you know, what are we doing? So, this is obviously something that can effectuate that.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay, so, uh, good, I think we have no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the modified Town of Berlin tax abatement policy.
Second.
Thank you very much, any further comments? Hearing none, all's in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Agenda Item Number Eight is authorization, uh, for the town manager to subordinate a license agreement for sidewalk at Main Street and Maple Street. This goes back to a development that occurred with CIL, uh, in two thousand twelve. They had to, I guess they're in the process, they have to file an ELUR, environmental land use restriction, under the sidewalk- sidewalk. Uh, Chris Edge is here to describe the details of the- of the arrangement.
Yes, essentially, with the environmental land use restriction, they have to make sure that essentially, no one else has the first position. So, we're basically subordinating our position with the sidewalk, we still have use of the sidewalk, any residents can still use it, but this really is just allowing them to close that piece of it. Uh, again, this was the Sherwood Apartments, or condos, I should say, on Main Street. So, essentially, this closes that piece for them, and then really, they can do that, it'll be on the land records, and really, there's no real harm to us, it just helps them take this last step.
Okay, thanks, any other, any questions, concerns?
Where do we stand with, uh, the rest of that project, is that not gonna happen, or?
At this point, I do not know, my last discussion with them was the market did not bear building across the street. Um, and I think that's probably more due to the cost of construction than the market at this point. Um, I know last time we had spoken, they were looking at maybe some first-floor bedrooms, but the discussion really hadn't gone too far recently. I'm- I'm still in contact with them, more so on the existing building, um, Depot Crossing, but, um, has not really gone into any conversation or timeframe on it.
Thank you. That, so, what do, didn't we modify something with that? Remember, there was, wasn't there some money that they?
Yes, we- we had, um, there was a- a four-part that we were giving them, essentially over, um, a certain timeframe. And essentially, it was money that we took into the project.
Right.
Essentially, would be tax reglement financing before it was on the state books. So, it was about one point one million in four payments. Each one of the payments was based upon a milestone. The fourth milestone was the project across the street, it did not happen, so we essentially took the one quarter of one point one million dollars, put it back into the general fund at that point, and essentially closed that piece out. They can come back to us for it, but right now, that piece of it went back in because they did not hit that fourth benchmark.
Now, is that, I haven't been buying it lately, but is that property, I mean, they've kind of cleaned it up, right? I think it's, uh, there's nothing-
Sort of vacant lot.
It's vacant, right? There's nothing, no weeds growing, it's not, it's not, it's not mowed or anything, but it's sort of, it's just there.
Will the office trailer be a permanent fixture in it?
Yeah, that's what that is.
Zoning or anything, or?
I don't thi- I don't know, there's be a perfect, permanent fixture, we can ask them to see if they move it.
I know if anybody else in town had one, there'd be all kinds of excitement.
But, um-
They're not gonna develop the land.
I don't see where they're gonna develop the land, the conversations we've had.
They're gonna meet the local zoning regs.
Yeah, the tr- so the trailer's still there? Is it still there, that, the?
It was the other day, I remember.
Okay, okay, so that's-
We'll talk to the Planning and Zoning Office and find out where that stands, and if any action needs to be taken.
And if there's any other-
If they're gonna use it, fine, but if they don't intend to develop it, let's clean up, rid of it, yeah.
And any other, if there's any building, I- I know at one point, there was a bunch of building material laying around, I don't- I don't think that's there anymore, but, right, I think that's all going.
I don't think that's there, it's just some weeds and it's, it's-
It looks a lot better.
It's not mowed.
Should we, you know, make a mow it, we don't want it to go into disrepair, there are houses, obviously, there are projects across the street, I wouldn't think the people looking out the window wanna see a- a messy-looking field, right?
We can, what we can do is, we can walk it, and, you know, walk, we'll talk with, we'll talk with the town planner, walk it and see what we need to do to make sure-
Yeah.
If they're not gonna de- build on it, let's see what we can do as far as, at least making it look like a- a nice corner.
Yeah, I mean, a mo- at least a mowed field would be better than, right?
We already have, uh, under the blight ordinance, you know, certain things people have to maintain their property, or-
Certain, yeah.
It is under the blight ordinance, but I know if- if some resident doesn't cut their grass for a couple of weeks, they get a letter from the town. I mean, they should meet the minimum standard like everybody else, I think.
Yeah, I'm not sure it meets the criteria for blight, but there may be under some of the-
Not blight, but at least the minimum standards that are, everybody else has to maintain, that's all.
I, I said, we'll, I'll have Mark go, well, Mark and Chris now go out, we'll walk it and see what needs to.
Okay. Okay.
It's a prominent corner in town.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, it's so nice over, I mean, obviously, their project's nice, and it's nice over by Paper Goods, you know, it's, and then you got this ice sore sitting there. I mean, I guess it's probably better than the, uh, vacant factory that was there before, but at least if the field is maintained, right, it would be, it would look a little bit nicer for- for the residents and- and, uh, you know, their project across the street, really, I mean, thinking of them, they're the ones that really look upon it more than anybody, but. Okay, thank you. All right, so, uh, any further questions on this, if not, we'll take a motion?
Okay, I move to authorize the town manager to execute the attached subordination agreement with respect to the town's license related to the sidewalk at the corner of Main Street and Maple Street, recorded in volume six seventy-seven, page two thirty-five of the Berlin Land Records, subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Second.
Thank you, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all's in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Agenda Item Number Nine, um, as you- as you know, you approved us to sign the contract for the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant from the state of Connecticut for the senior slash community center grant. Um, as part of that, they want us to, um, adopt a non-discrimination resolution, uh, each year that the- the council does, uh, adopt one. It was last adopted in May of two thousand eighteen, uh, decided that it was time to readapt the resolution, so we're asking to do that. Uh, we can attach it to the application, send it, or the, you know, the applicant, contract, and submit it. Chris is here to ask any ques- answer any questions. Sounds simple enough.
Uh, yeah.
Nothing to add, I think you hit all the-
Yeah.
High points on it.
Okay, all right, we'll take a motion.
Okay, move to adopt the attached nondescrip- uh, nondiscrimination certificate related to the grant for the planning and design of the senior community center.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any further questions, comments, hearing none, all's in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Agenda Item Number Ten, uh, is a, um, requesting approval of, uh, a program to allow that the, all Town of Berlin employees be granted residence rates as long as they pay the, uh, the- the proper fees. Um, John Zook is here to discuss the, uh, the- the request.
Um, basically, um, we don't see a lot of town employees playing- playing at Timberland, this is a way to possibly tap into a market that we don't really see people utilizing Timberland, and this potentially could create more interest in Timberland also. If the person were to, um, get the resident rates, they have to buy the benefits card, which I know we discussed during the rates, um, when we talked about those. Um, and proper identification would be a photo ID and a paste-up, and I know some portions of the town have photo IDs already. Um, so, we would just need the photo ID, and then, if not, with driver's license and a, uh, paste-up. Um, and this would- would not include, um, contractors or, um, vendors or business affiliates of the Town of Berlin, just strictly Town of Berlin employees.
Hey, why not? What do we think?
Great idea.
Good, yeah, great. Take a motion?
Okay, move to approve a new program at Timberland Golf Course that would grant all of Town of Berlin employees, including employees of the Berlin Public Schools, resident rates on a daily fee play.
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, hearing none, all's in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda Item Number Eleven is the, is a request by the golf course to, for a bid waiver for Turf Products Corporation. Uh, John is here to discuss why they're requesting the- the bid waiver.
Um, we're coming very close to the ten thousand dollar threshold for, uh, purchasing, uh, parts from Turf Products Corporation. They are the sole source provider of, for Toro parts and equipment. We have approximately eighty-five to ninety percent of our equipment is made up of Toro equipment, so we do, um, a good portion of the funds from our, um, maintenance and repairs, and also, um, auto parts does come from this account, and we're looking for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. And you should have a sole source letter from Turf Products also.
Okay, sure, yeah. Okay. All right, uh, go ahead and take a motion, if we have other questions?
I'm good.
One quick question?
Yes.
Um, do you order any of your parts online?
We do, um, some of the parts, actually, we had, uh, a blown engine on one of the, I think it was a Greens mower, and we went online, we were able to find an engine that was not supplied through Turf Products, so we do do that.
That, I think, is a lot of success.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
A lot of savings going online.
There are certain parts that nobody makes besides, um, besides Toro, to fit on the Toro equipment, but there's other parts that we are shopping for, and we saved probably just on that engine, probably two thousand dollars, so, yes, we are.
We're looking at that, thank you.
Okay, thanks, um, if we have no more questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Okay, move toward the contract for Turf Products Corporation to supply parts and equipment, as they are the sole provider for Toro equipment, an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number twelve is a request to waive the bidding process, uh, for four small sewer projects, um, to be performed by DPC LLC, which is Dave Pricker, he's the engineer with that company. Um, and he's for the sewer, the sewer, study sewer flows within the Kensington and Worthing Fire Districts, along with Berlin Water Control District. Uh, this is important, you heard Art Simoni and talk about how they were reducing the flow, part of that is understanding where the flow is coming from, so that we can properly, properly and adequately evaluate and charge back to people who are discharging to the sewer, so Ray is here to discuss it.
Hi, Ray.
Hi, good evening. Um, Dave Prickett's done a few projects for us, and, uh, we're kind of hoping that he's gonna do th- these two. Uh, they're broken up into two formats, actually, Jack had just indicated. One is the flow analysis, one coming from the western, uh, section, which would be including the, basically, the Kensington Fire District system, and the other one on the eastern portion, which would be the Worthington Fire District systems. We have to understand the flows there, uh, more dramatically than we've ever done before, and I think it's gonna have some bearing in terms of the way we actually build both entities in the future for our Mattabasset bill, which I didn't, I didn't hear Art speak before, but I know it's relatively, um, just about the same as last year's, and it will climb every year successively. And we think that there's, uh, an indication here, we have to understand better where the sewage is coming from, from Kensington and Worthington, before we can start doing some billing process. So, this is really to confirm the flows that we think we have already.
Okay. Any other questions for Ray?
Seems like the bids came on what we budgeted, so we still have some more money in case we have to do, uh, other testing.
Yeah, uh, this one, I think, uh, it'll have some major ramifications in the way we do our billing in the future, so I'm looking forward to it, I think, uh, I already have my suspicions where it's gonna show, but I have, we need to verify it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, uh, hearing no more questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion?
I gotta ask a quick question?
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, if it is approved, I anticipate it will be, but will you come back to us and discuss the findings and the ramifications it has?
Oh, sure, I- I, I'm hoping it's relatively what I think it'll be, uh, yes.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to- I'll be happy to discuss it with you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a motion?
Okay, move to waive the bidding requirements and award DPC LLC this project to identify sewer flows from each, uh, water district and not to exceed thirty-seven thousand dollars as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Onto our town manager's report.
Um, the, on your desk should be my, the town manager's report. Uh, prior to coming here, I went to the Board of Finance meeting. Um, they are required to adopt a budget so they can go to the, the hearing next Tuesday night.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I was hoping to have these filled in for you before I got here. I've just been waiting. Kevin's just texted me the numbers. So if you look on the, if you look on the backside, you'll see what the proposed budgets were. Um, that was the numbers going into the, the, the budget into, into, oh, this was a breakdown of the past few years where they were going, where the budgets have been. Um, that was the information that was passed out tonight. If you go to the front, um, of, of the paper, uh, if you will, where it says, A, the Board of Education budget for this year will be forty, uh, as proposed right now, is forty-five million, two hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Now, that, the, the Board, the, the Board of Finance reduced their request by one point three million dollars, but added back in point four million dollars. They rem- they, they transferred the, um, the, the, uh, the security guards from Department sixty-one over to the Board of Ed budget.
What?
That's what they did. Um.
That's not good. Can we undo that?
I don't think there's, and, and as I understand the charter, you're not allowed, you can only reduce the budget, you can't, um, you can't add to the budget.
We don't wanna add, I just wanna put it where, in, in another area. I'm not reducing it.
I don't think they can, I don't think the, the, I don't think the town council can transfer.
Didn't the council in its entirety decide that it needed to go into sixty-one? We all decided that, right?
As did the superintendent agree to that, too. As did the Board of Ed agree to it, the meetings I attended. Uh, what do you, what do you think, Mr. Counselor?
So you're talking about an item that was a line item in the town budget getting moved to Board of Ed budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
And what precisely is the item? Is, we're talking about, uh, an, an item in the fiscal year.
Yeah, I didn't give you the.
Fiscal year nineteen budget?
No, it's in the proposed two thousand twenty.
So there's no line item in the existing budget?
No.
It was added in. So I won twenty twenty, there's a line item.
In the budget that I proposed, the town manager proposed, I put a line item in per discussions that we had had, uh, mutual discussions of four hundred thousand dollars. It was being put in specifically for the purpose of funding, uh, security at the five schools.
Was there any kind of a, uh, MOU or any agreement entered into with PD?
The PD was part of this. They, the, the P, um, ju- the, the PD did not wanna take supervision, take responsibility for supervision, and there are various reasons why they didn't wanna do that. So through several meetings that, that we had to discuss this, um, came up with a, an, we came up with an approximation of four hundred thousand dollars, um, and that money was going to be put in Department sixty-one, which is the mutual department the town has to fund some school, school operations. Um, and then what would happen is that the superintendent's schools would appropriately manage the security for us, but it would be funded through Department sixty-one.
But it's gonna be supervised on the Board of Ed side?
It was gonna be supervised on the Board of Ed side. It's similar to right now, um, we, 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 uh, we, we, Department sixty-one, we fund the, um, the, the, the custodial services out of that apart, out of that budget, but it's managed by the schools. Uh, Doug Solak is, is, is out of that department. He is, he is mutually, works for both sides, but he's, he's funded there for part of his schoo-, uh, part of his services to the, to, to the Board of Ed. And also in Department sixty-one, we cover the cost of the nurses, but the nurses are supervised by the NA.
So it's a line item that was not in the Board of Ed's budget that the Board of Ed proposed?
Correct.
Kind of a bizarre issue, quite frankly, because you typically don't see, I mean, it's typical that a, a Board of Ed budget will have line items increased or decreased at the Board of Finance level. You typically don't see a line item being added to a Board of Ed budget. I've never heard of it, quite frankly. And if, if, there's Board of Ed line items that aren't funded, well, I've heard of funds being added to that line item, but, but for the Board of Finance, what you're saying is they essentially created a new line item within the Board of Ed budget.
I don't, I, I wasn't there, so what they're telling me, what I'm getting from Kevin was, is they moved for four hundred thousand dollars for security guards from Department sixty-one to the Board of Education.
But what line item in the Board of Ed budget did it get moved to?
It did, it, I think they just, I think they just gave it.
Created a new line item in a Board of Ed budget.
I'm not sure they went and specifically went into the, they may have just.
The Board of Ed voted on a budget to.
Yes, they did, but it didn't.
And it wasn't in there.
No.
Per, per agreements with, with myself and the town manager and the superintendent. And the Board of Ed was very clear when they voted on the guards where the, where the budget would be, where that line item would be in Department sixty-one, but.
I mean, the problem, the problem doing it that way, quite frankly, is that the Board of Ed gets an appropriation of funds. And by state statute, the Board of Ed cannot be told how to expend those funds, okay? So they get an appropriation, and if you create a line item for them and you put four hundred thousand dollars in that line item, and they decide, let's say, the budget gets caught subsequently, before or after referendum, they decide they wanna use that four hundred thousand dollars for something else, then they're perfectly okay to do that because by state statute, the council, the Board of Finance, nobody can tell the Board of Ed how to spend their appropriation. That's why Count sixty-one exists. So that's, that's the problem, is if you, if you create a line item and put money over in that line item and they decide to spend the money on something else, then you don't have funding for your school's security.
That was a mistake.
That was the reason to leave it in sixty-one, and then, again, the superintendent was okay with that? The Board of Ed was okay with that?
We were all in agreement.
Yes, well, I thought so.
Well, I think that's bizarre about it is that the Board of Ed, when they voted on a budget, they didn't have that line, I'm being told at least, they, they didn't have that line item in their budget.
No, they did, as far as we know, they, they talk in generalities, they request a certain amount of money, um.
They have a line item budget.
That we didn't, I don't, we, I don't.
The Board of Ed, when the Board of Ed votes on a budget, does anybody know? Do they have?
Yeah.
Sure.
But this was not, in their presentation, uh, this has been agreed upon, that this was gonna come into town, to Department sixty-one, we were gonna fund it.
Maybe meet some, do, do we need some more research, Counselor, before we, uh?
I mean, I, I need to know accurate facts about exactly how it went down.
Yeah.
Because if the Board of Ed voted on a budget that didn't have a line item.
A line item, okay.
And the Board of Finance created a line item in the Board of Ed budget and funded it, I mean, it's not a, there's no question that the law is, they spend their appropriation however they deem fit. So that's not an issue, and that's not something, I can't give an opinion that says that there's anything improper about that, because that's what the state law is. So if the idea is to make sure that this school's security gets funded, the way to do it is to either have the Board of Ed have a line item and be a party to an MOU, okay, that the, uh, Board of Ed, I mean, the, I've been, I've done six budgets as a Board of Ed member in Trumbull, and I can't, I can remember lots of cuts from the first election in the Board of Finance and the Town Council. I can't remember anybody suggesting that they would add a line item, but the problem would be that if we don't have an MOU with the town committing us to how we're gonna spend that money in that line item that's been added, then, you know, we have a statutory duty to balance our budget. I mean, Board of Ed's the only municipal agency where the board members have personal liability for deficits in the budget. So if you have a tough budget year and you have four hundred thousand dollars in a line item, you can go spend it on something else to balance your budget. Not, not because of any malice or any bad faith, but because you need to balance your budget. So that would be the concern.
There's no MOU.
You would need one on the town side, but if it's in the Board of Ed budget, there needs to be some agreement between the board and the town that that's gonna get funded. Because otherwise, the town has added, through a Board of Finance, it's the town's agency, the town has added a, a line item that wasn't included in the Board of Ed budget, is what I'm hearing. Therefore, why would the Board of Ed.
I don't remember seeing one.
Be expected to use those funds for that purpose?
Could kiss the security guards goodbye. Sorry to hear them say that, bud.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, that was the first part. Thanks for the first part, that's good.
The, uh, the town budget has been set at forty-seven million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-two, uh, excuse me, one hundred twenty-nine dollars. They reboot, we've reduced the town side by a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, if anybody wants the details, I, I'd be glad. It's, it's five thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars there, um, to come up with a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in cuts. Um, so, so the, the total budget for this year at this point is nine, ninety-two million, six hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars, which equates to about a one point nine mil increase, a mil rate of three point, thirty-four point four zero.
Just if I, I apologize for.
Well, that's fine.
Just, just to, to clarify one thing. If the Town Council and the Board of Finance meets as a joint board, the charter provides that, as you know from last year, within five days, a receipt of the town budget recommended by the Board of Finance, the council shall meet to approve the budget as presented, reduce the budget by line item, or reject the budget. Council rejects the, appro- approves the budget whether or without reductions, it goes automatically to the referendum. You wouldn't be reducing the budget to move that four hundred thousand dollars as part of the town budget. In other words, regardless of whether it's on the Board of Ed side of the ledger or on the town side of the ledger, it doesn't involve an increase or a decrease of the budget. It, it involves moving it to a town line item versus a Board of Ed appropriation. There's no increase and there's no reduction.
Right, they just moved it.
As a result of that, because it's one, even though it's voted on, the charter reform, it is one town budget, it is one appropriation.
Right, but.
Needs to be dealt with at your joint meeting.
Huh. Well, we, you know, we probably.
Because like I said, the risk is that that money is part of the appropriation, and the Town Council and the Board of Finance have no ability to make sure it gets spent on security guards.
That was all purpose of leaving it where it was. To make sure there were no threats of it being cut.
Yeah, and they were fine with that.
So the council could, in adoption of the budget, move that money back to Department sixty-one?
Right, it's not an increase, so it doesn't violate seven dash five of the charter.
Okay.
And it's not a decrease.
Okay.
It's a, it's a line item funding.
All right.
Moving money from Board of Ed budget to town budget. It does not change the overall dollar amount. It decreases the Board of Ed budget and increases the town budget. But for statutory purposes, it's one budget. You know, we have that statute that lets you vote on the Board of Ed and the town budget separately, but from a statutory perspective, it's all one town budget. It's just the Board of Ed operates under a different set of parameters than the town does, because the Board of Ed can spend their appropriation however they want, the town cannot.
Okay, and the way the, and, and I don't have, I don't have the ordinance in front of me for the charter. It's okay that, it, even though it, it's taking it from one side, because the, the budget's bifurcated, it's in two separate parts, we vote, the town votes on two different parts of the budget. It doesn't matter, as long as the entire budget doesn't increase, the, the, the Town Council can transfer between them.
Yes, because the way that it's worded in the charter, it talks about the budget.
Okay, so it's the.
The budget.
Okay.
Approve the budget, reduce the budget, reject the budget. So it's one budget.
All right.
You, as the town manager, prepare a proposed town budget, that's seven dash two.
Yep.
Right, so it's one budget. The way that the charter revision went was Berlin joined the minority of towns in Connecticut that bifurcates the vote on the budget. So.
Okay.
But, but, but again, the danger is, without an MOU between the town and the Board of Ed, and with statutory protection of that appropriation and how it's expended, if you wanna make sure that four hundred thousand dollars gets expended on school security, it needs to be on the town side.
Exactly.
The town cannot expend money without your approval from a line item for a different purpose than what it is appropriated for. That's statutory.
All right.
All right, and, you know, I mean, obviously, we just heard this, so I would be curious before we do anything, and we will have our chance to ask the Board of Finance what their reasoning was, obviously, but, and I don't know if anybody was down there from the Board of Ed or from the town, I, well, I guess.
Kevin was.
Kevin, but he.
Kevin was texting me.
Yeah, yeah, huh, that would have, but, uh, would have been nice.
So just to make clear, Jack, the numbers you read were already the adds and reductions.
Right, that is already, that is the numbers I read, so just, if you want, I'll read it to you again.
Uh. The, the Board of Ed was forty-five million, two hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars.
Okay, and that included the one million, point three million deduction.
That's, that's the one point three million reduction.
And the four hundred thousand addition.
Correct, and the general government is forty-seven million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Less one eighty-five and the four.
That, that, that's the one eighty-five already been taken out and the four hundred been taken out.
Yep, okay.
So the total budget is ninety-two million, six hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars. The, the mil rate for that budget of this year would be thirty-four point four zero, these are Kevin's calculations, uh, and what he's saying is that would equate to a one point nine zero mil increase or an increase of about five point eight five percent to the budget.
It's a one point, um, uh, one point nine mil rate increase, five point eight percent increase in the budget?
Yeah.
Five point eight five.
Eight five. Okay. Okay, well, probably get some homework ahead of us, huh?
Next. The rest of the town manager's budget, I hope she, uh, reports easier than I hope.
Thanks for the news, Jack. You know, lately, Jack, honestly, a lot of the news you give us is never good, but that's all right.
I won't take.
Not your fault, you're just the messenger, I get it.
I won't take the every other Tuesday off, um.
That's okay.
The, at, at the last meeting, I think Karen asked about the, um.
She did.
And, and the funny part was, they, I didn't call him. Ironically, the email came the next day from them saying, hey, do you wanna meet? So it was a little bit of luck there, but, uh, we've got the contract, it is on the agenda, we've already got the ag- agenda item written for the next meeting.
Yeah, I see that, that's really cool.
So it'll come before us on the next meeting. It's, there's no cost to the town. In fact, we may get a little bit of money back, and, uh.
What was that?
We, it, there's no cost to the town. In fact, we may get a little money back.
What are we talking about?
The textile recite.
Oh, yeah, the, the, the.
Pink bags.
The pink bags.
Yeah, so.
Yes, you should have that pink bags.
You'll have that at your next council meeting for approval.
Let's get it, the pink bags.
I was wondering about that.
Right.
The ordinance committee meeting, uh, scheduled for March twenty-eighth at six thirty in Doc McIntosh's room. At that, by that point, we should have the, uh, the final drafts for the dog control ordinance. Uh, we'll discuss options for the temporary sign, including, I think, somebody mentioned looking at, uh, We- Weathersfield, we are looking at that. Uh, just a discussion about the golf commission's budgeting. Uh, I don't anticipate a budget, uh, in ordinance change. We'll just talk about, you had asked about a change in accounting there and a senior tax abatement. Also, at the last meeting, you asked about information on single, uh, the plastic, single-use bag ordinance. Um, we'll have some information for you. I did talk to Jennifer Coppola, uh, about this, and the state's looking at, at, at an overall law for this, so we'll bring that, we'll bring information on the ordinance and what the state has for an overall law. Um, number four, uh, we ha- we are, began our negotiation with the Newport group. I expect that we should finish them this week, and, um, prospectively, we would have something for the Town Council at the, uh, the next meeting, uh, to keep that project moving forward. Uh, the staff performance reviews are being finalized, but they should be done in, by the end of this week. Um, so we are also, as a staff, working on a personnel manual. Uh, we've, we're at, we've added some new sections such as equipment use policy. Uh, that governs all town equipment. We wanted to create some accountability there, uh, as far as using equipment and the maint- maintenance of equipment, um, so we're, we've included a, uh, equipment use policy. Um, our goals are to define our expectations better to, to our employees and also to increase emphasis on safety. I've been meeting regularly with Steve Wasnia, who works with Kerma for our, our risk management. Um, our experience has been getting better each year. We wanna continue that, uh, as an example. Over the last couple of years, we've had a couple of serious injuries resulting from people waxing floors, slipping and falling. Slips and falls are usually end up resulting in being bad accidents. We, we looked at different options, including outsourcing that, uh, having somebody else come in and do it. Um, there's a safety committee, which I now attend the meetings. The safety committee up, themselves came up with some suggestions, and they think they found a better way of doing the waxing floors, which will prevent the slips and falls, so we're trying. So we're trying to just increase the safety awareness, so that we, we continue that experience down, and that allows us to get lower rates for our insurance, and, and each year, if they, if our performance is good, there's even a rebate sometimes that comes back, so we're working, trying to emphasize that. Uh, the Town Hall project is continuing, the only reason I bring this up is, uh, we've, since I've been in this position for two years, we've talked about what are we going to do with the, uh, the food pantry? And we've talked about moving it to Pistol Creek, getting, sending it to church, doing this, doing that, um, we, we finally just looked downstairs and we, we feel with the reallocation of space, including some storage space in the, in the, uh, in the, um, Board of Ed storage area, that we have adequate space downstairs to create a quote unquote permanent location for them. Obviously, that would be pending any police station, uh, re, refurbishment, but at this point, we need to establish an area for them, we, we, we don't have anything permanent. They do it in the hallway, they do it here, uh, we've got food here scattered about, so we're going to give, we're going to create a permanent space for the pantry until such time that the police station gets moved downstairs. We need something right now, so we're going to take care of that. Um, the other thing is, and it, it, well, it seems like the last thing, it's actually very important, we have a coalition that looks at health benefits every year and the cost. This year, the rates of the health benefits have gone, will be going up, um, outside of the parameters that we've, we've negotiated in the past. So we're, we're talking with them about the increases and how to, how to allocate those back through the, to the employees. So that's what, that's what's going on.
Okay, um, you know what, Jack, so, uh, wait, I have a couple of things to ask you. Um, could, could we get, um, senior, uh, the, um, uh, Mr. Bajorzki here maybe for the next meeting on senior housing?
We'll invite him again, I have, I have invited him, and I think he was planning coming, uh, but I will invite him again.
Okay, that's good, um, and just to clarify our, um, our April meeting, is it the Senior Center?
Yes.
Okay, so that's our.
First one in, in, in April is in the Senior Center, yes.
It's our budget vote, is, well, right.
Afternoon.
In the afternoon, okay, is, is ever.
Are you talking April second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For some reason, that came up awfully fast, didn't it? As I knew it probably would, recognizing it's in the middle of the budget thing too, so whatever, um, so it's obviously a very important meeting. Um, so what are we, I?
One thirty?
Yeah, at the Senior Center, I, I mean, I.
Thirty, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, um, because that would be, well, we have until, what do, we have until, uh, we don't have to vote that night, right, or that afternoon on the budget?
You can have a special meeting.
Another day, right, one more day or two more?
Well, no, you have five days from the, uh, from the hearing.
You get it on the twenty seventh, right, I guess, is it from that day or from the day they?
From the time, they, they have a hearing, and then the Board of Finance has to.
Vote on the twenty seventh?
Vote on it, it looks like they vote on the twenty seventh.
Right, so we would have then.
It would be a Wednesday.
Right, so we, we, so we have till, um.
You would have to April third. We interpret that as being.
We would have till April third.
Yeah.
For the final vote, to send it to the re, referendum.
Correct.
Right.
Is that a joint meeting or just us?
Only you.
Thank you.
So, okay, so the second.
So should we hold that day the third, or are we just going to do it on the second?
Uh, uh, let's hold the third too, just in case. Um, maybe the, uh, you know, I, I don't know, we really have to look at this budget, and the first is, you know, I don't know, see how much. So, I mean, we're going to go to the, obviously, the town budget meeting is Tuesday, we can go there, but we've got our budget, we have budget materials, but I'm sure we all have many questions, I know I do. So I don't know, we need another work day like the first. I just don't want to, you know, it's hard to get a lot of that done in the council meeting, right, if you guys remember last year, we, I think we had one or two meetings last year, works that, right, before we.
Did, and then you went, well, you had joint meetings too, so it kind of.
Yeah, joint meetings, yeah, yeah, uh, I don't know when that would be, might be out of time for that, but, um, but I'm just concerned that we don't want to save it, you know, for the second. And I definitely keep the third open, Karen, I just don't know if we want to do another one, so that.
You're saying a possible meeting at seven o'clock on April first?
Yeah, April Fool's Day, that'd be, that'd be appropriate, um, maybe, or, or, or if we want to make it maybe Thursday, the twenty eighth, I'm just trying, what, I'm just throwing dates out.
I, I'm not here that week, I'm in Alabama.
Of, of the, of the, uh.
The night of the ordinance.
Yeah, I know, but this, the. Those, okay, so we're missing.
I'm on a business trip.
On that, you're not here that week, Karen?
All week, I leave.
Okay, so we got to make it the first then, I guess.
You can do it without me, I mean.
That, that's just going to be discussion, we're not making any votes.
No, no, I really.
We have a, a work meeting on Monday, the first.
Yes.
For the council meeting.
We can do, and the third.
And the third, but then if, if we come to a consensus.
We vote on it on the second, yes, we can do that, if everybody's comfortable with that, what do you guys think?
So you want to do it the first?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, because everybody's, everybody would be there for that meeting, um.
And you want it at seven?
Yes.
It might be difficult for me to make that.
Okay.
I'll do my, I'll do my best.
Alright.
What time is that one?
Seven, the first.
Would a different time be easier?
Six thirty, six, doesn't matter right that night.
Watch the kids.
Yeah, I know, you got a bad, that's a bad night for you, I'm sorry.
And then I'll be here.
Yee.
I don't know, we need to find out.
We'll figure it out.
Are you allowed to?
Might, want to do the first at six thirty, at least move it a little bit earlier? Is that okay?
I'll, I'll try and find a babysitter.
Is that, is that better for you, or la, later's better for you, huh, or no, not really?
It doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, that's right, you're there.
Yeah, my wife comes home from school.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
Um, but I, I.
And we, you know what?
If I had a babysitter, I can't say it's impossible, I mean, it could happen.
Okay, alright.
I just can't say for sure.
Bring the kids here, well, we'll put them asleep, they just listen to the budget stuff, they'll, they'll fall right.
Don't worry, we'll, we'll hold them, it'll be fun.
Yeah, and they'll fall right to sleep talking about this stuff, yeah.
Playing Superman off the benches, it'll be fun.
Huh, seven, seven, seven it is.
Hey, you're going to do it for seven on the first?
Yes.
You also want me to schedule for the third?
The third, yes.
Would that also be at seven?
Seven, uh, six thirty, let's do it.
So April.
Thirty on the.
Third.
So April first is a discussion, and then April second is.
The Town Council meeting, potential vote in the afternoon, which is probably bad planning on our part, but. Huh, is it bad planning? Can we?
It was a good idea, but.
It was a good idea, maybe gone wrong, gone wrong, but whatever, uh, is it too late to change that?
It would, it would be a special meeting.
I'm just worried, I, I don't, I want people to be there, and I know it's a work day, and I know it all sounds great in concept, and I want to meet at the Senior Center, but we don't want, that's the budget, I, I guess none of us realize, I didn't realize it was the budget meeting, the budget meeting, not that we can't vote on a special meeting the next day, I get it, but there may be discussion there. Which would be nice to have it in front of the seniors too, I mean, that, that, it's kind of a nice.
I think that was, that was.
Was that the plan, was that the plan, I guess I forgot that plan, but, uh.
Um, do you want to?
I don't know, what do you all think, what are you all thinking, because I, you know, I don't want to.
I think we told them, I think it's better we.
To be there?
Yeah.
I mean, it's definitely better to do what we said, obviously, to be there, uh, but I know it's tough.
So one thirty, April second, April third, seven?
Yes, uh, six thirty, April third.
Six thirty.
Seven on April first, one thirty, April second, six thirty, April third, yeah, it's good to have all different times.
So April first is here, April second's at the Senior Center, April third is here again?
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere in Town Hall, site to be determined. Alright, and we, we've got to make sure Peter knows, we've got to make sure he's.
Let him know.
Huh?
Let him know.
No, please.
We'll take, we'll get this, we're hired out, we'll send you all an email too, just to.
Yeah. Ah, what's that?
We'll send you all the overtime we're getting.
All the overtime. Great, a lot of overtime, it's great, okay, alright, so, I guess that, that'll, that'll work out, should be a fun time, alright, good. Okay, so that takes care of that, that's the meeting, that's that, uh, question on, uh, you know, there was something about FOI on some, somebody sent it to me, I don't know, news.
CT News Junkie, is that what it was?
CT News Junkie, is that what it was, yeah, something about FOI and Berlin. I, I don't want to say noncompliance, but they were talking about, uh, for some reason, they singled out Berlin, I don't remember, I don't remember the topic of the whole article, but it had to do FOI, and they said Berlin does not release, um, disciplinary records, and the context of the article was that it violated FOI, there was no reason to not release them. I just am wondering if that's true or not, I, and I don't know if you've heard that before, or.
I know, it, it was a, I got a call last week about that, and I checked, and it was, it was my understanding that our policy is, we don't, we don't, we don't, um, release those, those records.
Okay, and, and so.
That came from Denise Parsons, and so it.
Yeah, and that.
Not been doing that.
I don't, yeah, I mean, I just am curious that the context of the article was that, that there's no, uh, exemption under FOI to, to not release them, according to whoever wrote this thing.
On, with regard to personnel records under FOIA, it depends upon whether the content of the records, if disclosed, would constitute an invasion of privacy.
So would we be forced to, uh, disclose them if they were redacted?
I thought personnel records were exempt under two ten.
You could redact them, sure.
I'll be, I'll be honest, nobody's pushed it.
Might have to.
I, I just, I don't know, Berlin was singled out, I don't, I don't, it just was odd, that's why somebody sent it to me, like, Berlin doesn't, I said, I don't know, I mean, why would they single out Berlin, I can't, I, I can't remember the context of the rest of the thing, I just.
I don't have any FOI complaint.
I don't have any FOI complaint.
I have an FOI complaint, but it has nothing to do with that.
What is that Connecticut, what is that CT News Junkie?
Record Journal reported that the town of Berlin didn't provide letters of discipline for public works employees citing a state FOI exemption for the invasion of privacy. So letters of discipline are a little different than, um, personnel records.
It depends, I, I haven't seen the content of any of the records, but under the law, under FOIA, if, if the content would constitute an invasion of privacy, then as Joanne indicated, you could redact it.
So have we, have people been asking for this and we haven't released it?
Like I said, we've been, there've been requests to our, our Human Resources Department, um, she responded to some information, she did not respond with that, she told them that it was, that we don't release those. I had one call, maybe Thursday of last week, and the, the question was very quick, the person asked me, do we release those, I checked with, with, with HR, they said, no, we don't, I responded, and, and that was all, they didn't push it, they didn't do anything more than that.
Okay, yeah, you know, I don't want to rile her up on a newspaper article, but it was disturbing that, for some reason, that no other town was mentioned but Berlin, right, and that thing, you just.
Well, it was about New Haven and Hartford, I.
Yeah, right, I thought it was other towns.
I just pulled it up now.
For some reason.
There's been, uh, from other towns, I know that there's been some generic FOI requests being sent to towns asking for wage information and disciplinary records for different employees in different departments.
In different towns, all over, oh, okay, okay, so maybe that's what the.
Somebody's gathering information.
Ah, okay.
We did respond with wage information.
Oh, okay, so, so you think.
I think it was a bunch of newspapers, several newspapers getting together.
Yeah, a bunch of them, getting access to information.
All around.
Okay, huh, that's interesting, um, so, but you, you think, uh, Jeff, that we're on solid ground with.
I haven't seen any of the records.
Okay, so we don't even know what, yeah.
You know, if you could redact it.
Yeah.
To take out any information.
That would be an invasion of privacy, but.
Disciplinary records are a tricky thing.
Right, right.
Because you could, depending upon the nature of the action for which the employee was disciplined, there may not be any invasion of privacy.
Right.
But there's lots of circumstances.
Sure.
Where something happens, and it is.
Right, sure.
You know, a private component to it, and it would be appropriate to respond.
I mean, I want to understand not to release some of that stuff, I just don't know, I, again, I don't know what the basis of that article, why we, the, just, I just saw an excerpt of it, it seemed like we got singled out, and I just was curious why we got singled out, if there was any requests you guys know of, that for some reason, people, you, you had some, but you just didn't ask.
You had the one, you had the one.
Yeah, because they alluded to that we were violating FOI, that's what they are, that's what.
FOI complaint.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just was curious, it was an odd.
They didn't push, I mean, they, they asked one time, I answered them, and that was.
Alright, well, that's, that's fine, I just, that clears that up, I mean, if somebody asks, I haven't heard from anybody other than the person that sent that to me, but, so, alright, so that's that. What else we, uh, so, that was under Town Manager's report, alright, I just wanted to ask those questions, so, okay, we're, we're into council's, uh, special committee reports, we talked about that, we haven't, have they met? Nothing, did you meet with the grounds committee?
No, not recently.
Um, council communications, sorry, so, we're here, what do we got, anything? Yes?
Last year for the budget, um, for the budget, uh, negotiations or discussions, um, we had a big spreadsheet that was given to us with all the line items. It made it a little easier to read, um, I don't know if it's possible again to get that to us.
Dashboard.
Oh, the dashboard, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm sure you probably were, I just wanted to ask, because I, I looked at this, and, um, when you go to the back and you start looking at the, it's like size six, and my eyes are good, but it's just not that good. I don't know. It's really hard to read.
What size it is.
Um, if we could.
We can't.
Thank you. Actually, it's a budget, it was a budget cut, so we reduced the amount of ink we used. And we'll get that. Yeah, it's, it's really small.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
What else we got, yeah?
Um, I'd like the council to consider for next meeting a resolution about the polls and the, uh, for school centralization. A lot of the towns are issuing resolutions for or against it, I think it's an important issue for our taxpayers, I know our resolutions won't carry any legal weight, but it might help our representatives decide how they may move forward.
Maybe at least we could discuss it, can we put that on the, the agenda just for discussion?
I know it's important, a lot of our citizens have been talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, recognizing that, yeah, no, I agree, I mean, it's recognizing that there's a million proposals, we don't even know what, what's going to happen, but.
They're going to vote on something, but they don't have a plan either.
Yeah, I mean, it's worth at, at least a discussion to see what we all think about it, and, you know.
I think we owe it to our representatives, and to let them know what, what we feel.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, that's fine, we'll put it on, we can put it on the agenda, um, what else, what do we got, anything else? Nothing, okay, so we'll close that, and we will go to our acceptance of minutes, which is March fifth, so, take a motion.
That's the only one we have, right?
Yeah, we got two, uh, we're just, that's just one, considered one, Kate, March fifth, even though it's.
Yes, we don't have to do the town meeting.
Okay, so just, so just one.
I'll make a motion to accept the Town Council minutes from Tuesday, March fifth.
Thank you, second. All of them favor?
Aye. Aye, abstain.
Extention, uh, any opposed, any none, um, so approved, so moved, sorry, so moved, thank you. Alright, so, we are now in our executive session, um, if, if we could just, so, go and make a motion to go on executive.
Motion to go into executive session for personnel matters, like a general state statute, one dash two hundred, six part A, concerning appointment, employment, performance, evaluation of a public employee, uh, Jack Healy.
Okay, we have second?
Second.